All right, good evening and welcome to the March 4, 2025 regular session of Finley City Council. We will start this evening's meeting with the roll call followed by the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
Mr. Baumann.
Here.
Mr. DiArmond.
Here.
Ms. Frishy.
Here.
Mr. Greeno.
Present.
Mr. Hellman.
Here.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Russell.
Ms. Warnicki.
Here.
And Mr. Wobser.
All right, both Mr. Wobser and Mr. Russell informed me they weren't going to be here this evening. Mr. DiArmond.
Make a motion to excuse them.
Second, Mr. Greeno, discussion, all those in favor of excusing Mr. Wobser and Mr. Russell, say aye.
Aye.
May I oppose nay, they are excused. Will you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and then we'll follow that by a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to accept the previous council meeting minutes. Mr. Palmer, motion. Second, Mr. Greeno, all those in favor of acceptance of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
May I oppose nay, they are accepted. Mr. Greeno, I'm going to put you under the gun here, do we have any replacements or removals from tonight's agenda?
Yes, we have one replacement, ordinance number 2025-014, renewal of Hancock Public Health MOU, this will go into the legislation section, it's just removing a few words, it's removing county from the header and also the first whereas, removing HPH from the first whereas and removed the county combined general health district from section one and replaced it with public health.
Is that in a form of a motion?
It is.
All right, second, Mr. Palmer, all those in favor of replacing the items as suggested, say aye.
Aye.
May I oppose nay, they are replaced. Mayor, do we have a proclamation tonight?
We do. We do. All right. So whereas the Hancock County Board of Developmental Disabilities was established in October 1952, and whereas the mission and purpose of Ohio's County Board of Developmental Disabilities remain as strong as ever, with county boards continuing to provide vital services and resources to Ohioans with developmental disabilities and their families, and whereas the more than 900 people with developmental disabilities supported by the Hancock County Board of Developmental Disabilities, their families, friends, neighbors, and coworkers, encourage everyone to focus on the abilities of all peoples, and whereas the most effective way to increase this awareness is through everyone's active participation in community activities and the openness to learn and acknowledge each individual's contribution, and whereas policies must be developed, attitudes shaped, and opportunities offered that allow people with developmental disabilities to live as independently and productively as possible in our community, and whereas we encourage all citizens to foster and support such opportunities that include full access to education, housing, employment, and recreational activities. Now therefore I, Christine Emmer, Mayor of the City of Finley, Ohio, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Finley and offer full support to efforts that assist people with disabilities to make choices that enable them to live successful lives and realize their potential. I further encourage all citizens to join in this celebration by celebrating awareness of the many contributions offered by people with developmental disabilities in our community. So I know we have Jackson and some family members here joining him, and I think you will receive an email in the next couple of weeks, we are going to be hosting, are we doing hot chocolate or popcorn? We're having popcorn served in the municipal building here in a couple of weeks with some of the folks from Blanchard Valley and our developmental disabled community, but we're super excited to have this event and always enjoy. So Jackson, if you could come forward and if Nadine and any other family members would like to come forward, I will present, we'll do a photo and then we'll give you the formal proclamation in the next couple days.
Oh, Jack, you should be in the picture. Kids, come on, come on. Here, let's go.
Because he was going to meet the mayor.
With that, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Mr. Greeno, second, Mr. DiArmond, any discussion?
I'll say something, Jackson, good job, you got up there, most people don't like to stand in front of a crowd, this is about as big a crowd as we've had in a long time at a city council meeting and you did a great job, good job. With that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May I oppose nay, it is approved.
Okay, we have no recognition or retirement resolutions, we have no petitions, the oral
communications, we have two left that'll be at the end of the meeting, written communications.
Letter from Blanchard River Watershed Partnership President Jane McCleary regarding the city's donation of $5,000.
Questions or comments, letter be filed.
Officer, oh.
We don't have any utility or communications written or oral, report to municipal office and department.
Officer shareholders disclosure form from the Ohio Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control for Bennett Enterprises LLC, doing business as Ralphie's located at 730 Trenton Avenue for a D5 and D6 liquor permit, a check of the records show no criminal record for those who applied.
Mr. Palmer.
Move that no objection be filed.
Second, Ms. Warnicki, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor that no objection be filed, say aye.
Aye.
May I oppose nay, no objection will be filed.
Officer shareholders disclosure form from the Ohio Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control for Bennett Enterprises LLC, doing business as Ralphie's located at 730 Officer shareholders disclosure form from the Ohio Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control for Ralph's Appliance Incorporated, doing business as Ralph's Joy of Living, located at 1922 Tiffin Avenue for a D five liquor permit. No applicant names or social security numbers were supplied to the police department, therefore no background checks were done.
Mr. Palmer.
Move that a 30-day, uh, what is it, 30-day extension be granted, uh, to the cities to give Ralph's Joy of Living a chance to provide those names?
Second, Mr. Diarmuid. Discussion, all those in favor that the extension be, 30-day extension be filed, say aye. Any opposed nay, or else you got 30 days.
A letter from Service Safety Director Martin regarding appropriation request for civil service budget adjustment.
Letter be filed.
Airport Advisory Board minutes of January 28th, 2025.
Minutes to be filed.
A letter from City Auditor Stashak regarding Ohio Revised Code 135.12 designating disposa- dis- okay, talk. Dispos- dis- what's the word? Depository, by Ninioli. Uh, Auditor Stashak requests that this letter be read. Boy, I couldn't get that out.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Like to make a motion to have the letter read into the record.
Second, Mr. Palmer, all those in favor that the letter be read, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay?
Nay.
The letter will be read. Now, before we go, I've looked at this letter and there's an attachment, I hope you don't want the attachment all read also. You highlighted a small area of that.
Yes, Ohio.
Is that okay, Mr. Stashak?
If you read the attachment at all, I'm just on it.
Unfortunately, the city's investment income is being politicized by some individuals running for office. It is not something that should be su- subject to political games, so I am providing the following for your benefit regarding what's in place today. One, all banking and investments are managed under the Uniform Depository Act, Ohio Revised Code ORC 135. This is an extremely detailed set of laws which the City of Finley must follow. ORC 135 also governs investment management. Number two, under ORC 135, the institutions eligible, eligible to hold the city's money must be properly considered and vetted. This is done in a specific window of time, once every five years, partially to prevent politicking, 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 there you go, that appears to be happening now. Three, the City of Finley currently has depository, depository agreements in place per its own resolution 18, 2021, which is required to designate act, active interim and inactive funds of the city. And number four, there are only a few banks that want to and are, are capable of doing a full book, book of business with the city. This list has grown shorter with each depository bid process. This has been a challenge for the city due to the high risks swiftly changing banking environment, including scams, fraud, and theft concerns. Currently, the investments are being managed under the process I adopted utilizing Government Finance Office, Finance Officer Association best practices for managing relationships with security, securities dealers. The practices include separating bidding, custodial, brokerage, and funding of purchases. It not only protects the taxpayer fully, it also causes purchases to rotate between three to five different broker, dealers annually due to the strict bid process. You may not realize, the state of Ohio has required me to take specific annual training to handle our investments. I am fully certified annually. I have even had the opportunity to assist in the training over the years and have strong relationships with those experts. You also may not realize, the types of investments the city may purchase is restricted to lower yielding investments with minimal or no risk to the principal or money invested. Over the last several years, I have looked at hiring a third-party management firm to assist in investing the city's interim and inactive funds. I have interviewed no less than six firms over the last few years. However, there are a few reasons it has not been practical to do. Number one, prior city auditor Robert Sprague eliminated management of our investments by third-party due to the relatively high cost prior to my taking office. Two, the administration has not prepared any type of long-term cash flow and projected balance forecast since Mr. Schmelzer and I worked on them. To properly invest the schedule out, our, to properly invest and schedule out our investments, a proper forecast is needed. This has been stated in your budget finance book for several years and I will continue to request one from the administration until it is provided. Three, the costs associated with the management of the funds has continued to be proportionally extremely high, particularly when the cost of maintaining custody of the funds and the percentage fees were weighed against yield to maturities of the investments. And four, many of the firms have changed ownership in the last few years due to key knowledgeable owners retiring. However, I will continue to evaluate the opportunity for Finley to benefit. Lastly, in the mo- in the recent comments, there has been no consideration given to the overall complex banking needs of the City of Finley. The city's finance, finances consist of many different and connected parts. Management of them is significant and take up a large part of every single business day. For an example, merely inquiring the simple interest in our finance system is not reflective of the actual yields on the investments, return or revenue due to discounts on purchases, so the information being spouted is not generally correct. Contrary to what happens to be popular belief, the interest earned on investments does not and cannot solely go to the credit of the general fund. Per the city's ordinance and other state laws, most interest received must be distributed to certain, not all, funds based upon the actual cast, cash balances of those specific funds. Interest accrued but not received yet is recorded at the end of every month along with a reversal of the accrued interest of the previous month. I sincerely hope this sheds some light on a topic which is larger, is larger than the current political speak can account for and I appreciate the attention you have given this letter.
Mr. Diarmuid.
Thank you. So, the city's investment income is not being politicized. It's being questioned by me. I'm only interested in one thing and it's the return on our investments while staying compliant with the Ohio Revised Code and meeting our liquidity requirements. So section 134.01, 135.01 of the Ohio Revised Code talks about public funds. It says the governing board, in the case of a municipal corporation, is the legislative authority. So in other words, the city council is the fiduciary over our investment funds. So Jim references, if you read Resolution, uh, 18 of 2021, it clearly gives the auditor authority to invest our funds. There's, there's no issues with that. Jim's investing the funds. Problem is, we're not doing our job. City council's not, I mean, city council's not governing over the investment portfolio. We really have no idea how our investments are doing. So the starting point is we need to learn about our investment portfolio. So, tonight, I am formally requesting a presentation by our portfolio manager, one month from today, at our April 1st council meeting, with full transparency. I mean, I'd like to see a PowerPoint presentation projected on the screen for everybody to see. And I'd like to have the following topics presented. So we need to learn about our return on investment for the last three years, 22, 23, 24, by line item and by total return on investments. We need a forecast of our return on investments for this current year, 2025, by line item and total ROI. I think it'd be helpful to have a general discussion on the type of investments that the Ohio Revised Code allows. I mean, there's a very narrow box of investments that we can do, they gotta be insured and collateralized. I mean, we can't buy stocks, you know, we can't buy crypto, right? So it's very, very specific of the kinds of investments and I think a general, uh, discussion on that would be helpful. Uh, there's three different types of investments we have, you have like short-term liquid assets, we've got excess liquid assets and then long-term investments. I think we need a discussion on each of those types of investments and how that liquidity relates to the administration's cash flow, cash flow projections that the mayor's working on. So I would request that a, a fifth-third bank representative, uh, be, uh, in, and along with Andrew Brosart, our financial advisor, uh, be in council chambers during the presentation on April 1st. So again, my goal is complete and transparent information about the performance of our investment portfolio and I think this presentation would be a good starting point. Thank you.
Ms. Frishy.
That was a lot. Your letter was a lot, Jim, his speech was a lot. Um, and I guess I'm, I'm not quite following why we, why, Dan, you are, um, wanting such a detail on that. I mean, we still, uh, number two item, the administration's not prepared a long-term cash flow, which would probably answer some of your questions when we put the numbers together. And, and we do get a lot of numbers from the auditor throughout the year. Uh, we get reports, we, we get PowerPoint presentations. Um, unfortunately, I don't think council overly engages in them, but I don't know what the benefit of us micromanaging the investment amount unless Jim's not making us any money, um, why we need to have that type of meeting. I think, um, we need to get our capital plan under control and we need to get that forecasting from the administration to be able to see our full picture. But I don't see having the fifth-third bank and, and Andrew in and, and I just don't see the time and necess- being necessary at this point. I think maybe we should just be more digging into our, our reports that we get when we get our, um, budget forecast, I mean, we get budgeting from Jim. Is it twice a year, Jim? I can't remember, you, I know you talk a lot, so we don't.
You actually get the information Mr. Diarmuid's talking about monthly, but he doesn't realize it.
Well, I meant our, you, you give, you give a report. You give a report to us when we look at the entire community forecasting what's happening in our community, where our investment numbers are at, um, where our projections are at. That's twice a year? Yeah, so I, do you, do you understand those or do you want?
I do.
So do you want more out of that?
Mr. Baumann.
Uh, I, I guess I would say that I happen to agree with Dan. Um, but on, on top of that, I would add another bullet point and that is, I would like to see how our investments stack up and, and, and perform against other communities of our size. Because I wanna make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing in that regard.
Mr. Diarmuid.
We have no idea what our return on investment is. Uh, we, we have a hundred million dollar portfolio. That's a big number, a hundred million dollar investment. There's only one guy in this room that knows, if he knows, what the return on investment is. It's never presented, ever. We get a monthly report, Jim, we get a monthly report that shows how much is in the, in the portfolio. And you take, you take the average of all those over 20, uh, 2024, it averaged a little over a hundred million dollars. It's a big number. We have no idea what our return on investment was. And so, the auditor posted in the accounting system that we, that we made 2.4 million dollars in interest. So I took a simple ROI calculation, is told, and was told that it's not accurate. Okay, fine. Fine. What is accurate, so, I, I want, I, I would like to hear an accurate number and we need it on a regular basis, isn't it a one-shot deal? It, it's not unusual to have a quarterly update from any financial advisor that anybody in the audience employs to get a, a quarterly update on, on what the return on investment is on your portfolio. I mean, that's what I'm asking for. Thank you.
Mr. Stashak.
It's nice to hear Mr. Diarmuid clarify a little bit what he's looking for. I wanted to clear in the record, uh, clear back in early February, I let him know that I had, he asked simply, what was the total amount of interest earned from all investments? And it was the only question he asked, very, very detailed, my response is that I didn't understand what he was looking for. He was looking for yield to maturity, he's looking overall view, and so we, we're hearing a little bit of clarification tonight, but you were very disingenuous, not forthcoming or transparent with me until tonight and it's obvious that you're being political about it. But, so that the public know, every month you get a report. And in that report, it shows the investment, the amount of principal that was invested, and the coupon yield. And then we mature those investments. Um, I would agree, you don't understand what you have there. I would also, uh, state that up through this point in time, it's probably been decades that it's been the tradition that council has requested the information in format that it's. That's why it's in that format and this is the first request we've had to change that. I think, uh, it will be a good exercise for us, however, you've lost focus on what the real issue. No amount of interest, no amount of interest is gonna make up deficits that you guys pass, number one. Number two, the overall return that we're seeing on the investments generally in the agency and treasury portfolio for the last two to three years has been upper fours to five percent, maybe over five percent depending on time. So we're getting a very competitive, wonderful rate. And as the letter said, by following best practices with money that we are able to invest the interim funds, because you have no inactive funds. You don't have inactive funds because you don't have a proper forecast for your budgeting in the long term. This particular request needs to be expanded out to make sure that the city looks at its finances as a whole. You're gonna look at a capital plan tomorrow night and you're gonna look at it backwards, you're gonna look at one year. You should be looking at year 10, your needs, five-year needs, and bring it back all the way to year one, so you talk about wants and needs and by doing it that way, you will tell the investment person, whether it be me or an outside person or them. This is how much we have available for investing long-term and we would like to maximize the yield to maturity on these investments. However, up to this point, I want no bones about it, I want the public to know that the game that was played, for people to say, hey, the finance system said this was the interest rate that we received, the interest rate did not take into account, as my letter and as my notes asked you, what do you want? It doesn't account, even if you pay, for example, if I paid $990,000 for a million-dollar bond, so I bought it at a discount and the coupon is 2%, the yield is likely significantly closer to five than two. And you're right, you guys don't understand, happy to explain it, happy to be part of it, but you're not going to demand of me a list, a plethora of things that may or may not be fulfillable because it's more than just the investment portfolio. It sounds like you guys wanna know also about savings interest. How about Star Ohio, Star Ohio right now, I think as of yesterday, was paying 4.5, 6%. Is that not adequate money, return on our investment? By the way, you got that report monthly, you know how much money's in Star Ohio and you know how much the rate is.
A lot.
So don't infer to the general public, you're not getting the information. Now, whether the information's in a format that's useful or whether the information is in a format that you like or whether the information is in a format that needs updated, I think those are different issues, but I think you should be ashamed the way you approached this.
All right.
You could've been a lot nicer to this office, we could've done a much more professional job.
All right, Mr. Baumann.
I, I think, um, in your response, Auditor Stashak, um, it is a little bit forest for the trees. Um, what we're asking in the interest of transparency is, is for you to do your job and just kinda explain some stuff to us. And, and, and we cannot, and we cannot say, we're being transparent, but complain that other members, say, of the administration are running, say, the water and sewer fund and they're, whatever. And so, I think, we, we, what we're asking here is not hard, I don't think. I think we're just asking for you to shed a little bit of light on it, that's it. And I think you're kinda, uh, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not going there, but that's, that's just what we're after.
Okay, Mr. Hellman.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be, I'll be brief. I'll be brief, thank you. Um, Jim, I, I guess I wouldn't take offense at this, I think, I think- take offense at this. I think, what I hear saying here is that Councilman DeArmond would like to be more involved and would like some more information and more timely, I guess. And I guess I can't blame that. I meet with my professional advisor three times a year. I've been involved with a foundation that doesn't have a hundred million dollars in it, but it has a little bit of money in there. And the people that run that meet with us three or four times a year. And there's a finance committee, so I, I don't object to what Councilman DeArmond was saying, and I don't think you ought to be offended by it. In fact, you ought to be glad that somebody's taken an interest in it, because I don't think, like you said, a lot of us don't understand it. So, that's all I've got to say.
Mr. Stajak.
I am offended, because the way he approached it, he neglected to say that we had a long discussion last year. We started down this path. I cautioned him about some things, offered to be fully transparent, and then the games started. And I want the public to know they are games, and I stand by my word. And we will get information. We're going to have to work through with Mr. Wobser of Appropriations, some format of the information that needs to be put together. Ultimately, there is a board that will need to be created yesterday within the confines of ORC 135. So we need to make sure we don't get into purvey of that, and we'll work with law director Feigner to make sure that happens properly. But in terms of a presentation, we're going to have to come up with a way to get a reasonable amount of information that can be acquired. The history you've asked for, I'm not sure that it's possible without a significant burden being placed on staff for some of the information, because each and every investment will have to be evaluated digitally. And so we're going to have to take a look at what we can put together, how we do it, and how we give a complete overall picture in a manner that's understandable and in a manner that council will. So we'll take a look at, at the best way to do that, have a few discussions. But it is, I agree, Mr. Hellman, exciting. Some folks are taking an interest, even if it is for political reasons.
Mayor.
As we work through the requests and the information, auditor, would it be possible for the present, for your report forward to include the savings account interest that we are earning? Because right now, that says we're not receiving any interest, and obviously $22.5 million in the savings account. Hopefully, we're, we're receiving something.
2%.
Okay. And then, so we should probably look at that, because I think I'm receiving more than that on my, my own. And then also the maturity dates, because I, I do think that that is beneficial information. We all have a fiduciary role for the City of Finley. So I think we want to better understand. I think we would also, you know, I'm glad to hear that there is a governing board that we need to set up. In the past, who has sat on that board?
I think, again, we're losing the point. We'll take a look at the reporting requests. We'll take a look at the best way to approach it. But if you guys continue to lose focus on the fact that we got a deficit problem and try to shift it to an interest rate revenue issue, I'm going to have a major problem with that. So we'll get to the information. We'll talk about the actual returns. I don't think it's going to be possible, based on the complexity of the banking and the interrelationship with the type of compensating balances and the things that are done within the banking systems, to get easily one net number as to what this is the return on all the monies that we are holding. But I can to you, it's, it's quickly becoming significantly less than 100 million, because of the way we're spending. But we'll report it properly, and we'll move forward. We'll get some idea of it. And again, we'll do it probably in committee, because that'll be a better way to do it. And I do agree, Mr. DeArmond. I think 135 is clear. Council is supposed to have a hand in it, but not a single council person. It's a committee decision. It defines that there's to be a board, and we don't have the president pro temp here tonight to put one together. But that would be the next step, for that board to be prepared, and us to start to put information together. So, once that boards together, that's where we'll begin to have these discussions. And the board and person who chairs that board is who I'll be responsive to in making sure that we bring the information properly to council.
Mr. DeArmond.
City Council is the governing board. We don't need a separate board. You've already said before, we were going to take this to appropriations. It doesn't belong to appropriations. You've said that before. Two weeks ago, we talked, it's in, I have an email, Jim. Doesn't matter. But anyway. So, City Council's the governing board. That's what our higher revised code says. And we have lots of transparent conversations about our spending and the budget, lots of transparency. The one thing that we don't have any transparent conversations about is our investments. And, and, and the most important number, when you meet with a financial advisor, is, is the year-end return on investment. That is such a standard measurement of a portfolio, return on investment for the whole portfolio at the end of the year. So, to say that we can't do that for the last couple of years, I mean, I don't know what we've been doing, but it seems like that's a pretty important number, Jim.
Mr. Stajak.
Lastly, again, you manipulated my words. I said I need to speak with Mr. Wobser as head of appropriations in terms of reporting, and that's his responsibility. In terms of the governing board, it does define a board. There is a board that has to be appointed. So, and I've talked to Mr. Feigner about this, and, and he knows that it's something that he'll have to have some involvement in. And also, in terms of what you're asking for, what do you consider the investment portfolio? Do you consider the investment portfolio, the agencies, treasuries, Star Ohio? What do you consider it? Do you consider it cash? And, and I don't want an answer. It's a rhetorical question.
No, it isn't.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is, that will part, that is part of what will have to be determined. So, again, per my email to you, we can respond in a manner that's appropriate. And it's not a response that I'm going to make to the mayor, and I'm not going to work this out with the mayor. This is something I'm going to work directly with council's board as the authority to do it, because that's where it belongs. If it's a finance function, I'll cooperate with that group, but not Mr. DeArmond. It's council as a whole. And when council puts that together, I'll be responsive, I'll be responsive to it.
Mr. Niemeyer.
I'd like to make a motion to move on. I requested the letter be read. It was read. I appreciate that. Nobody should bring up who's doing their job or not.
Thank you. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Niemeyer. I do have one additional question. In the, for us all, because again, you are, you are the auditor for the City of Finley, but we all have fiduciary responsibilities, and some questions have been asked in the past and pushed off and not received. So, we can't allow this to be pushed off again. I appreciate that Wobser can be the one to call a meeting. However, I think we need to know when the last governing board met, who was on that, how that was determined. And then, does the City of Finley have an investment policy that is in place? And if we could also receive a copy of that place.
I think we had a motion on the floor to move, and I'll second that motion.
That, yeah.
Because that's out of line.
Hang on a second. Mayor asked you a question, Jim. Do you want to respond?
I call, we already had a motion on the floor.
I'll defer to the second on the motion.
Okay. All those in favor of moving on, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Just clarification for the clerk of counsel. Mr. DeArmond asked for a meeting in 30 days. Was that agreed to or not? I just, it was a lot of talk back and forth, but I don't think anything was decided if that was going to happen or not.
No, we moved on.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Frishy.
Letter from City, wait, yeah, City Engineer Calb regarding 2025 annual street resurfacing and curb repairs, project number 32850300.
Letter be filed.
Letter from City Engineer Calb regarding 2025 annual sewer, large diameter cleaning and sewer televising.
Letter be filed.
Letter from City Engineer Calb regarding Broad Avenue Bike Path, project number 31934600.
Ms. Frishy.
Quick question, Jeremy. With moving this $35,000, is that all it's going to take to do the things that you're saying that need to be done, or we're ceding something to move?
No. So, we already used up the funds. We were able to use our in-kind labor as the match funds for the ODNR grant. But with how that path has turned out, originally, we weren't going to take it underneath the path, or underneath, fix the retaining wall and stuff. But we have people using it, and the retaining wall is an old, like, 2-by-12s, if you want to say, timbers that are falling in with people using it. That's something we want to get fixed. So, what I was saying with that is, we were able to utilize our in-kind match, because our city park guys and stuff were able to do the job, and I was able to use that as our match funds. So, ODNR paid for that. I had some funds set aside, but we'd like to expand that, finish it out the rest of the way, make sure it's safe all the way down through there, because we have done a lot of effort down through there to kind of spruce it up, so make it usable. So.
But that'll cover it, that's all I care about.
That, that will cover it, because we'll be having our city crews be, perform that as well.
And we still have to build that out with hours, and that's still going to cover it?
Yeah, yeah. That's what all those, that funds, there's not much left on it, but that, that will cover us.
Letter be filed.
Letter from Service Safety Director Martin regarding an insurance payment for repairs of a police department vehicle from an accident.
Letter be filed. We have no committee reports. Legislation. We'll start with resolutions.
Third reading for Resolution 5, 2025. A resolution stating what services the City of Finley, Ohio will provide to the territory proposed to be annexed to the City of Finley, Ohio, situated in Allen Township, County of Hancock, State of Ohio, and being a part of the west half of the southeast fourth of Section 35, Township 2 North, Range 10 East, a tract of land consisting of 37.906 acres of land, more or less, here and after referred to as the Keller Keller Cyphred Enterprises LLC et sec, or et al. annexation.
Ms. Warnicki.
Move for approval of Resolution Number 5, 2025.
Second, Mr. Hellman. Discussion. Ms. Frishy.
Just clarify for me, Mayor. This one is going to be housing, correct? This has a purpose on this property?
That was the original request of the Cyphred Farms property, but obviously, they are not necessarily tied to that one thing.
All those in favor of the resolution, say aye. If your name is called, those oppose name.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArmond.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
Third reading for Resolution 6, 2025. A resolution stating what services the City of Finley, Ohio will provide to the territory proposed to be annexed to the City of Finley, Ohio, situated in Liberty Township, County of Hancock, State of Ohio, and being part of the southwest quarter of Section 1, Township 1 North, Range 10 East, a tract of land consisting of 7.883 acres of land, more or less, here and after referred to as the North Town condominium Villas annexation.
Mr. Hellman.
Move to approve ordinance, or resolution 006-2025.
Second, Ms. Warnicki. Discussion. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye. If your name is called, those oppose name.
Mr. DeArmond.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
And Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
Second reading for Resolution 10, 2025. A resolution stating what services the City of Finley, Ohio will provide to the territory proposed to be annexed to the City of Finley, Ohio, situated in Liberty Township, County of Hancock, State of Ohio, and being part of the northeast quarter of Section 36, Township 1 North, Range 10 East, a tract of land consisting of 9.166 acres of land, more or less, here and after referred to as the Greenbrier Holdings LTD and Mauer Rentals LLC, South Main Street, annexation.
Ordinances.
Third reading for Ordinance 2025-13. An ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or service safety director of the City of Finley, Ohio, to enter into a renewal agreement, including updated provisions with the Finley YMCA, to operate the Riverside Swimming Pool Facility and associated YMCA programs for public and recreational use for the City of Finley for the 2025-2027 seasons, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hellman.
Move for approval of Ordinance 2025-013.
Second, Mr. Greeno. Discussion. Mr. Stajak.
When this ordinance first came out, I had a clarification I had requested, and I want to make sure that it's, it's correct. That the way this is, we pay $30,000, and if there are profits, the $30,000 we pay does not factor into the calculation as to how those profits are split. Is that correct?
Mayor.
I believe that to be correct.
All those in favor of Ms. Frishy.
So should we have it determined how it splits on, I knew we were getting a statement, because I had asked Rob, like, we're going to see, and including people that have memberships already, or they get subsidized, we still see all that count?
Correct. They will provide to us. And we did update the agreement to distinguish, I know that there was revenues and profits as two different items. So, yes, they will have to provide to us on a regular basis, an income statement or profitability statement that we will review. And so we will bring back out our contribution, the subsidy to them, as part of that will not count towards the margin.
So how's it calculated?
We will back that out. That won't count towards their revenue. So we will look at the overall revenue flowing in, as well as expenses flowing in, and the revenues will be separated out. Our contribution will not count against the revenues that we would receive. We'll make sure that that is not being factored in as a benefit to the YMCA. It's just helping them cover operating expenses that we don't want to take on in managing the pools, dealing with lifeguards, et cetera.
All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye. If your name is called, those oppose name.
Ms. Frishy.
Nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArmond.
Aye.
Ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for Ordinance 2025-14. An ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or service safety director of the City of Finley, Ohio, to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Hancock Public Health to provide backflow testing and repair of all city-owned facilities and declare an emergency. This is the replacement ordinance.
Mr. Palmer.
Move to adopt ordinance number 2025-014.
Second, Mr. Baumann. Discussion. Ms. Frishy.
Mayor, there was a district advisory board meeting on the first of the month. I know you were in attendance at that. Can you give us a little bit of detail on Hancock Public Health? I understand that there was maybe some financial shortages, and there was some discussion on who's on first, how the money's split. Doesn't sound like they're making a change this year, but maybe it's next year. Is that going to affect us at all on our contributions when it comes to our portion for '26, maybe?
Mayor.
So, no, there is not a contract change for '26. Last night, the vote was to extend the contract at the current amounts through '26. And then we will be convening the group to discuss the cost shares for 2027. The overall operations, there is an annual report that has been issued by the Hancock Public Health. I'd be happy to share that. They are doing a lot of great work within our community, from obviously, the Help Me Grow program, Save Car Suits, immunizations, STDs, tracking and prevention, hepatitis testing, all of the different programs that they do out there that do a lot for our community are kind of outlined in that report, as well as some of the work of the mobile clinic, which you all invested in, et cetera. So, at this point, we are convening the group to discuss the apportionment. There were a trustee or two that voiced frustration, feeling that the combination of the health departments.
Point of order. This legislation is for the backflow agreement?
And I will apologize on that. I wanted to discuss it, and when I looked at the change, I was looking at the change.
Other comments.
If you want to discuss it later at the whole business, that'd be great.
To the backflow.
Backflow, let's vote on it.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye. If your name is called, those oppose name.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArmond.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for Ordinance 2025-16. An ordinance amending chapters 1119 and 1141, and adding new chapter 1152 et sec, to be known as the City of Finley Cannabis Zoning Ordinance, adopting, approving, and incorporating the entire text of the aforementioned amended chapters and new chapter 1152 into the codified ordinances of the City of Finley, Ohio, repealing Section 513.15 prohibiting the sale and/or cultivation of cannabis, repealing ordinance number 202481, in order to eliminate the current 12-month moratorium established in said ordinance upon the adoption of said new cannabis zoning chapters.
Mr. Hellman.
Got a question. Um, based on the input that we received this evening uh, from members of the community, as well as the fact that we have twenty percent of the council members absent, I'm entertaining the idea, should we, can we, um, table this until the next meeting or whenever?
Will, uh, Mr. Feigner.
What, what you're asking, Dennis, is Robert's Rules of Order can be misconstrued time and time and again. And a lot of times people will say a motion to table something. What, what you're really asking for is postpone to a certain time. And that certain time could be to put this, uh, I guess, on hold until the next meeting. It can't go any farther than the next meeting. So if you're looking to have a full council by that time, you could make that motion, but it would have to be addressed at the next meeting. I mean, we're here on the third reading and so it could, it could be put off till the next meeting.
And you can't, if, if we just, if the council decides to postpone it or table it further than that, you're saying we cannot do that?
Not according to Robert's Rules of Order.
All right.
Postpone to a certain time, period. Either, either dies or you, you hang on to it for a period of time till the next meeting.
All right. I, I thought there were some interesting comments that were made this evening. Uh, for one thing that I thought maybe ought to be considered and am disappointed that, you know, twenty percent of us aren't here and thought it would be helpful, but, um, and thought that maybe either the, it go, it gets bootlegged back to the Planning and Zoning Committee to reconsider some of this or all of city council can reconsider it at a, at a special meeting, but, um, that's why I asked the question.
Well, the other way it would happen is it would, it would, it would fail as an ordinance and go back to the drawing board.
And if I may.
One last and then we're going to go to motions or. So did you have a motion, Mr. Hellman or not?
No, I guess I had another, I had another question. If it, if it.
No, go ahead.
If it fails, then can it be brought up two months from now, let's say?
No, it's going to start over. If it fails, it's going to start over by, by council rules, either by two, two council members proposing the ordinance or, or administration.
And then it would, it would go back then to the Planning and Zoning Committee and go through that, all of that?
Well, all the processes it needs to go through would start all over again.
All right.
Oh, just to clarify, Robert's Rules of Order, it's the last rule of, of, it's council hereby adopts the Robert's Rules of Order, the latest addition to govern the conduct of business at all meetings of council insofar as said rules are not in conflict with these rules of procedures, meaning the council rules in Ohio Revised Code or statutes. So just, it's a little bit of background.
Thank you for the education.
All right. Okay, with that, uh, there has been no motion made.
Yeah, I guess I would move to table this.
I'll second.
There's all.
Point, point of clarification, I believe the motion should be postponed till the next meeting based off of the law directive statement.
Right, just, just for the record, just, it would be a motion to postpone to a certain time.
Why can't we?
Which is next meeting.
And it has to be the next meeting is what you're saying?
Correct.
I concur. Whatever you said.
Of course, you have this, do, do they have the same option at that meeting to postpone it another meeting? Or that business has to be dismissed or?
It's going to happen or it's not.
I got you. Ms. Frishy.
Rob, I don't understand. I mean, we've tabled ordinances before and they just fall off at the end of the year. You're saying we can't table it. Is it because we're on the third reading is why we can't table it? Indefinitely until we choose to untable it? Or I don't understand the motion that you're asking for, that the mayor wanted the clarification on. I don't know that we've ever done one of those before.
Right. Um, one of the, I was just going to try to find the statement in here. It says that, that, the motion to table something has been the most, uh, abused, unfettered, uh, motion in council proceedings or other meeting proceedings like this. And, uh, the motion to postpone to a certain time is the appropriate way to do it. You just can't put something on a table and, and six months later have a council person decide to bring it back. It's either going to pass, fail, or you're going to deal with it at the next meeting if there's additional investigation.
But can't we, if we tabled it, it goes back to committee. What if they make an amendment to it? Can't we still amend it in the, in the context? And that might take a month or so.
Well, the problem is, is you're on the third reading.
So the problem is the third reading. We would have been on second. We could have tabled indefinitely and you would have been okay with the tabled word. Oh, you're rolling your eyes.
Well, maybe, well, maybe not indefinitely, but if we're, I mean, this is, this is the night. It's either pass, fail, or you can do a postpone to a certain time, which is going to be the next meeting. If it was a, a village and it was thirty days, once a meeting, uh, one meeting a month, then you could do it that way.
Mr. Russell had brought this up at a previous meeting and, and, uh, at that time, we just kind of brushed it aside. Um, yeah, this is one where there's actually, I don't want to claim the sheriff, but we have a new attorney in the room. And, uh, if he, and, and he's just following the rules as Robert's Rules of Order allow. Okay. So we have a motion to.
Postpone until next meeting.
Postpone, or do we, is that what your motion was, Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
That's what it was, but I need to make a caveat here. I'm finding out in my schedule that I am not going to be here on the AT, so I apologize for that. So I don't want you to think I was trying to skip it.
I got you. Okay.
Sorry.
No caveats allowed.
I've dropped, I'll drop my motion.
So there is no motion to table or postpone.
Unless somebody else wants to pick it up. I don't want to be accused of something.
So it's withdrawn, the motion?
Well, right now, we have no motion.
All right, Mr. Diarmant.
I'll make a motion to postpone it until the next meeting.
All right.
Are you going to be there?
Yes.
Second, Mr. Palmer. Further discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of postponing this matter till the next meeting say aye. If your name is called, those oppose name.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Nay.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Nay.
Mr. Diarmant.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
So two nays, five, no, six.
Six to two.
Six to two, so that passes.
Okay, now I'm going to put you under, is that opposing?
Okay, the motion to postpone is accepted.
Okay, let's move on.
Third reading for Ordinance Twenty Twenty-Five dash eighteen. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency. That is the third reading.
Third reading. Mr. Ballman.
Move for adoption, ordinance number Twenty Twenty-Five dash zero one eight.
Second, Mr. Palmer. Discussion. Minister Stachek.
Just real quick, I want to thank Mr. Feigner for, uh, taking the time to do the research on the, those contracts that were outside the city and ancient home standards, so thank you.
All those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those oppose name.
Mr. Niemeyer.
This is oh eighteen?
Yes, this is for the ODNR water line reimbursement.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for Ordinance Twenty Twenty-Five dash nineteen. An ordinance supporting this necessary City of Findlay, Ohio employees in efforts to preserve and enhance downtown Findlay as the heartbeat of the community and authorizing City of Findlay Administration to engage in maintenance and improvement efforts in partnership with the Downtown Findlay Improvement District. That is the third reading.
Mr. Ballman.
Move for adoption, ordinance number Twenty Twenty-Five dash zero one nine.
Second, Ms. Warnicki. Discussion. Ms. Frishy.
Mayor, I need some better clarification because this is a hard thing for me to approve to pass. I think businesses should take care of their fronts of their properties with snow removal. Um, I know we were already spending, I think, almost a hundred thousand dollars between payroll, you know, benefits, all of that with one employee. What are you budgeting to be able to beautify and maintain the downtown at a hundred percent of the city cost?
Mayor?
So there's actually no change in the structure of the agreement. DFID is going to continue to give us forty thousand dollars towards, uh, the flowers, additional improvements. As was discussed at the, I think it was Appropriations Committee meeting, it was quite a while ago. We kind of went through the different line items and, um, overall, the committee felt, you know, that a lot of the things that were being done in the downtown are things we would be doing regardless of DFID. What this legislation is doing is satisfying the auditor's request of having documentation that council approves the city administration and our employees to be able to provide services specific to the downtown that we don't necessarily provide throughout the entire community.
Mr. Stachek.
To add to that, there's no budget here passed, so if it wasn't included in your budget that was passed under ordinance one, there's no additional spending permitted for these purposes.
Ms. Frishy.
I, I guess I'm going back to our conversation. I know, Mayor, you didn't, we were not really getting reimbursed timely from DFID in the past. And then you're, you expressed that you didn't even feel that we needed to get paid that forty thousand. So we are going to get paid the forty thousand timely to offset the hundred thousand. And then on top of that, that one employee will not be addressing, um, maintaining the river and keeping that area clean that I know we're way behind the eight ball on, right?
Mayor?
Well, you structured that sentence in a very precarious way, so I don't think I can say yes or no. Um, but I would say that you are correct, that I struggle a little bit with expecting, um, the downtown, uh, Improvement District to provide us the forty thousand dollars just to offset expenses. I would rather utilize those funds to do additional improvement uh, for, uh, lighting in alleys, in the pedestrian alleyways, um, improvements to other amenities, replacement of different benches, things that they would see that are more specific to downtown. You are correct that we continue to have an employee that works in various departments, but that he does focus a large portion of his time to help maintain the flowers as well as pick up litter, clean the mulch and landscaping, which again is specific to downtown. Um, and so, yes, we will continue to have those efforts. You are correct that we don't have anything over and above budgeted at this point in time. We are working separately of downtown improvements on a river cleanup and maintenance plan, which we are working with, uh, with our teams to put together and then work in coordination with the water, Hancock Soil and Water, as well as the engineer's office and any other appropriate parties to get the river cleaned up further as well as on a long-term maintenance plan, but that is separate of anything to do with downtown.
Do we have a motion in a second?
We do.
All those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those oppose name.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
And Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Ordinance is adopted.
Second reading for Ordinance Twenty Twenty-Five dash twenty-one. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hellman.
John, can I interrupt for a minute? There's a phone laying on the floor over there that's either going to get stepped on or kicked if Mr. Oh, well, if it's a mouse. Oh, jeez, now there's a phone.
I know, I was like, uh.
Sorry for the disruption.
That was Matt Cordenate, one of you guys, before I will, thank you. All right.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Hellman.
Sorry about that.
Okay, um, Mr. Palmer.
Hey, Jeremy, can you explain why this, uh, truck, uh, is needed now instead of waiting till next month to approve this legislation?
With this truck right now, so the current truck we have that we're using as a roll-off is having clutch and transmission problems, so at times it's inoperable. Once our shop gets it rolling again, they're using it. Uh, we have a bare-body truck that is available in St. Mary's, I believe, that we can get. Once we get that, part of the funds that are being appropriated are, for this is for our, um, street department fab shop to actually get this to, um, be able to load and unload roll-offs. So with that, I want to get the, we want to be able to get the truck over to here and have enough time so that way we can get that ready to be used when construction season starts. Um, like I listed in the, uh, letter previously, our street department just, they're be, they're able to utilize the roll-offs a lot easier than what they are with dump trucks. Um, they can have one truck put their roll-off on, pick up the other one, and they're using one truck, one guy for that. We have smaller jobs. It's not like we're needing, you know, the big dump trucks or anything like that. So why we're wanting to move on this is so we can get the truck here, get it built before we start heavy in construction, construction season.
Mr. Palmer.
With that being said, I move that council's rules be suspended and this ordinance be given its third reading.
Second, Mr. Ballman. All those in favor of suspension of rules, uh, say aye. If your name is called, those oppose name.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
And Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Rules of council been suspended and the clerk will give this ordinance its third reading.
Ordinance Twenty Twenty-Five dash twenty-one.
Mr. Palmer.
Move for adoption of ordinance number Twenty Twenty-Five dash twenty-one.
Second, Mr. Ballman. Discussion. Ms. Frishy.
Jeremy, I guess, how many roll-off trucks do we have?
Hang on a second. Seven to one. We don't have enough. Seven to one.
Not my first rodeo. Okay. All right, go ahead, Ms. Frishy.
So we have one roll-off truck.
We have one truck that is able to unload and load a roll-off.
So we have roll-offs and that's how we operate to remove debris already?
Correct, because the roll-offs, the roll-offs themselves are cheaper than a dump bed. And when we are loading debris, we, we don't just load dirt, concrete, asphalt debris, we're loading trees and stuff. When they use a dump bed with trees, then they got to take the tailgates off. It's a lot more process. With this, they're able to do a whole bunch of stuff with it.
So what's our situation on standard dump trucks? On our, because that's what we were budgeting for originally. So, eh, where are we in our replacement, improvement of our dump trucks? And how is it going to impact the departments for what? We have a lot more.
So dump trucks aren't sitting either. Just because we're using this doesn't mean a dump truck is sitting. What this is doing is this is taking the job of two dump trucks and we can use one truck to be utilized for that. We still have to have the dump trucks for, across the jobs for snow plowing, for sawing, all that. So I don't want you to think just because we're having this, we have two roll-offs, we have dump trucks sitting. We're not, but this is how the cheaper way we can create a dump truck and still get the job done.
I'm talking capital planning.
Right.
So we, we have these dump trucks, right? So if we're not going to do the dump truck, we're going to do a roll-off, that's going to slow down the, our planning, our capital planning with replacing or improving our dump truck fleet, or however you want to say that.
Yeah, that's, that's all.
So you're not going to come to us and say, hey, we now need a dump truck too because this is what we were planning for, even though we say this is going to take care of two trucks, you're telling me.
Right, it, it.
That's all I'm trying to clarify.
At a job, it, it takes the place of two trucks. So don't say it takes place of two trucks, right? It's at a job site instead of having two trucks there because you don't, you want to dump in the truck while they're dumping your load in the next one. This takes the, this, at a job site, this is two trucks at it. Um, so I don't want, you know, keep laboring on that, but as you're saying with capital building out, yes, we have those built out for years on the trucks that we have right now, on, you know, what their hours are at this rate, what if we kind of look ten years, five years in the future, what those are going to look like. We have those built in, so we have a normal cadence on replacement of trucks. Not saying in five years we're going to be replacing one, but we need to have the money set aside, so if that truck does need replaced, we, we have a good financial plan for that. That's when we work with our departments every year, when they look at pieces of equipment, just because they had a piece of equipment in twenty twenty-five, you know, and last year they had in twenty twenty-five, we reevaluate that and say, hey, I know you had that in your cadence over the past five years, is it actually needed? Can we move it out? That's how we work with them on that. So we do still have our truck, dump trucks being built out through the next ten years, you know, of replacement. But each year, each capital plan, we got to make sure that can they be carried over a little bit longer, so that way we can stretch them out.
And you feel we can do that?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's what we've been doing, yes.
Ms. Mayor?
Said another way, yes, our capital plan is accurate based upon the needs of our departments.
All those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those oppose name.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Second reading for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute the attached transfer agreement as it pertains to the transfer of real estate owned by the Board of Hancock County Commissioners to the City of Findlay and accepting the related deed for same. Said real, said real estate being located east of North Main Street, west of Jefferson Street, north of Clinton Court, and south of Center Street.
Mr. Stachak.
If it's okay with the President, I have a couple requests particularly in light of Mr. Quiner's statements earlier tonight regarding the third reading.
That doesn't have anything to do with this ordinance, so let's do that under.
It actually, it actually, it actually does.
This is the second reading.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay. Mayor.
I would just point out, we did provide, sorry, it wasn't included in your packet. There was a map of the parcels showing as per requested. So the bottom two parcels are showing the city parking lots that would be transferred to the county. And then the parcels, yep, the parcels that are north of Clinton Court are the various parcels that then would be transferred to the city. Those are properties that were all acquired as part of flood mitigation and would be transferred to the city. They were previously residential properties. In the agreement, they do have statements regarding environmental disclosures as well as the deed restrictions that we've placed on the parking lots to ensure public parking. And then on the residential properties restricting, restricting development a hundred feet from Clinton Court north.
Second reading for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute the attached deed and related transfer agreement for same as it pertains to the transfer of parcel numbers six zero 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 nine two four seven four zero and six zero 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 one zero zero eight seven three zero to the Board of Hancock County Commissioners. Second reading for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five. An ordinance memorializing the expenditure of public funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-five for approved public purposes as set forth herein. First reading for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six. An ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. First reading for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency. First reading for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight. An ordinance authorizing the mayor's service safety director and/or city engineer of the City of Findlay, Ohio to advertise for bids where required and enter into contracts for various annual sewer large diameter cleaning and televising projects appropriating funds thereto and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Palmer.
Hey, Jeremy, how soon do you want to get out and get these sewers televised?
Sooner the better. I mean, people are starting to fill up their schedules. So we had a couple of large sewers that are needing cleaned for the long-term control plan, so we're wanting to get those. Our crews just can't do it, so the sooner the better.
Mr. Palmer.
To get these sewers televised and we can find out what's in the worst shape and get them taken care of, I move that council's rules be suspended and this ordinance be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Ballman, all those in favor of suspension of the rules, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Diarmant.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
And Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Rules of council been suspended and the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight.
Mr. Palmer.
Move that ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight.
Second, Mr. Greeno, discussion. All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declared an emergency. Ordinance, first reading for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty. An ordinance appropriating funds and declared an emergency.
Ms. Warnicki.
Since this is just moving insurance funds into the correct account, I make a motion that we suspend rules and give it its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Ballman, all those in favor of suspension of the rules, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant.
Aye.
And Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Rules of council been suspended and the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty.
Mr. Palmer.
Move for adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty.
Second, Mr. Diarmant, discussion. All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
And Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted. Okay, old business. Mr. Stachak.
I have a couple items. One of them in particular I need to clarify to keep us in compliance so we don't get a ten B five violation from the SEC, which includes comments during a state of the city address. One, just need to clarify, and you need to do it on the record per bond council, and we did this last year, that it is clear and there should be no mistake, the city is deficit spending. We did spend down our general fund cash balances significantly last year. Any way you look at it, it's defined deficit spending, so we need to be aware that that's part of it and that we have established deficit operational budgets and those have been adopted. And in addition to that, I got some preliminary cash carryforward numbers. I found a couple major errors in the math, but the cash carryforward on a couple of the funds also show that we have significant issues coming our way over the next few years. So the idea is we need to make sure that it's publicly stated and publicly clear that we're not hiding the fact that although we're in a very strong position right now, we do have some challenges in terms of our budgeting ahead of us. And that puts us in compliance with the SEC by making that statement. And I want to further clarify that by saying no amount of interest income is going to cover the deficit that we're looking at, and that's very important. I just couldn't resist. So that's that, and that's the main thing that I had there that we, that we needed to touch on. Second thing, Mr. Harrington, are you okay to do the second one?
Yep.
With regard to the parking lots and the trade with the county, two things that I need clarified prior to you approving and passing that legislation. Those parking lots, both of them generate twelve thousand five hundred dollars in income a year per what we have them booked at, the way they're supposed to be leased. Sometime in twenty-two, the second lot, one ending in parcel number nine two four seven four oh, the revenue stopped being collected. We have not been given an explanation as to why or documentation that it was allowable. So I need that from the administration, or those monies will have to be accounted for prior to the transfer of that property. Second thing is also, on one of those properties, you have a first right of refusal. And we cannot forget, and we've already addressed this in detail, almost ad nauseam in some prior council meetings several years ago. There is a thirteen-five, the Kirk family owns a thirteen-five first right of refusal on that property if the city plans on transferring. And we would be foolish not to believe that they would exercise that first right of refusal and put us in a very libelous situation. And I don't believe under real estate law, although I'm not an attorney and of course we'll have to defer to our new Director of Law, who is just becoming aware of this at the moment now. He did not have a heads up on this because he wasn't here when we discussed it several years ago, that you don't sell real estate or give it away when another party has a first right of refusal without solving that problem legally and properly. So that is one you may want to table so you don't get caught up in the switches and have to defeat it or change it or kill it in a manner that our new understanding of average rules won't allow. That would be, again, my advice this year of fiscal law.
So as senior councilperson, even though I'm present, that was addressed at that time and it was my recollection, and I'm sure our Director of Law will determine this, that that was studied. It was determined that there wasn't a first right that was exit, being able to be exercised by the Kirk or the Kirk Estate. And so just make sure that that, that is confirmed, but I know it was looked at at that time. That's the property that's behind the old Argyle. And so just FYI, and you would have been in the room at the time.
Yeah, I was.
So I don't know if you remember.
My recollection is exactly ours. So good thing we got a new one.
We're under old business, Ms. Frishy.
Well, my question with, comes back to the parking lots, I guess, and she brought it up. So twelve thousand five hundred, we were getting it for two, per lot, but we stopped getting money, I'm assuming we're not getting it on the front street or whatever we call that location over there.
We are, we are getting it on the one behind the Argyle. We are not getting it on the one on the corner of Hardin and Corey. And we need documentation as to why that stopped.
Okay, and so my other question goes to the mayor on that. I know we talked kind of lengthy at the last meeting that you all are working on increasing parking ticket rates and some things like that in order to cover the salary increases. Have you gotten any numbers on that closer, moving?
That information is still being collected and a comparison is being prepared by one of the sergeants. So that will be prepared. I did not, this is the first time being made aware that the revenue wasn't being collected on the other lot. So I'll have to look at that. I think it's because the county has been utilizing it, and so we have not been charging them rent. But I'll have to look at that. And I do recall the first right of refusal. My recollection is similar to Councilman Harrington, so we certainly will review that and take appropriate action. We can do a replacement ordinance at the next meeting if necessary.
But you won't have number proposals for parking ticket rates?
No, that's going to be a larger citywide conversation at streets parking and whatever the other word is in that committee.
Mr. Station.
To be fair to that, we need to be aware that the two-year budget shows in the second year that your parking fund is in a deficit, so that it'll need subsidized by the general fund. So you're adding twenty-five thousand to that subsidy out of the general fund in a year where you've passed, again, a deficit spend. So it's going to be important that those numbers are well-raided, well-considered and that they're realistic in terms of the revenue that could be acquired.
Other old, Ms. Frishy.
I have two items for old.
This is new, old business.
Well, I thought we were doing old for right now.
Yep, old business.
So I have two, one's for Rob. Rob, did you, and Rob, Law Director, Rob, I guess the other one's not here. Did you meet with the lady who spoke at the last council meeting? Do you have any information? Should we be forming an ad hoc committee with regards to dogs off-leash and animals other than cats and dogs and people?
I did meet with her that same week, I think it was on Thursday after the Tuesday meeting. We had a great conversation and I have a meeting set up that involves the dog warden, Chief of Police, Rob Martin, and myself. I've already drafted proposed legislation amending it, changing the penalties and some of the wording for our Findlay code. And that language and stuff has already met with her approval, Lynette Snyder. And, but she would see the final product before I'd ever presented here. So it is in works already and soon to maybe be proposed to council.
My second item was for the mayor with sheets out on County Road ninety-nine. I know there was discussion about the annexation that failed, but it seems like they're turning dirt, so they're okay staying out in the county. We're going to continue to give them water at one and a half times with no issue.
I believe at a previous council meeting when you brought this up, I shared that we authorized them to begin construction with the contingency that they submitted and will pursue all legal actions to annex into the city. So they have provided us legal documentation that they are appealing the county's decision to be annexed into the city, and we gave them authorization to begin work.
Okay. Thank you.
Their old business, Mayor.
I would like the investment policy. I think that it's something I've requested a number of times throughout the year and have met resistance and let off of it, but I don't think that that is something that I should continue to do. So I would like to formally request that if the City of Findlay has an investment policy, that that's shared with all other individuals, elected officials that have a fiduciary responsibility. And I do think we should continue to pursue having a conversation so that we all have better understanding of the investments that are all of our responsibility. And I'm not, you know, auditor, I'm sure you do a wonderful job in managing that, but that's something that should be communicated in more detail to all of us.
New business. Ms. Frishy.
I have one item under new business. I have some concerns. I received the delegation committee report through Adamus, and I'm all for any committees outside the city meeting, improving, you know, immigration, communication, language barriers, all of those things. And I know that, Mayor, you sit on the committee, Dan Diarmant does, it looks like Jacqueline Holman, and it says there's a Mary Kay Tuttle. The two concerns that came up to me when reading the minutes were, number one, navigating the DEI for twenty twenty-five. And the, it says the consensus is that they work, that the work is important and they shouldn't be maintained. So they're not going to remove the DEI from this committee, particularly when the primary focus for the delegation is to enhance and expand the dignity and respect for all beings. My concern there comes into how does that impact us since we do sit on that committee with applying for grants and getting state and federal funding? And then the other part that was even bigger to me of concern, you know, they're doing great things in other areas, was the Hancock County Cultural Humility and Health Equity Delegation. And this sure the heck looks like that this committee is forming a way to vet candidates to run for elected office. It almost reminds me of something similar to the Joanne Davidson Institute, but we're doing it on a local level. And I think that is extremely inappropriate, especially when we're using city employees on city time to do that. You know, it was, I think, a twelve-step process. And I think these two things are complete conflict and could cause us issues inside this city, and I think we need to address them.
Mayor.
So on the DEI through the delegation, that has no impact on city operations because it's not any formal policies that the city is adopting or aligning with that would impact. So that's not an issue. The delegation's goal is to continue to work to be an inclusive community. And as I'm sure you are aware, you can be a part of organizations and not always agree with things that are stated. Now, I agree with making sure that we are a welcoming community and that people feel that they can integrate into our community. And the delegation as a whole does really good work to do that. And I don't have concerns with the work that they're doing to make sure that we recognize the diverse populations, make them feel welcome, make sure that we have opportunities. But to your direct point, no, it does not jeopardize any of the city operations or funding, et cetera.
Do we need a legal opinion on that? Just to, I just don't make sure we don't end up getting into a hairy spot because you serve on these committees with other city employees that if we apply for a grant or anything, I don't want to lose it or jeopardize anything. So I don't know if that.
I'm happy to work with the Law Director, but you, I'm sure, attend a lot of different things that just because you're a city council representative doesn't mean we're adopting a policy that then is going to jeopardize or agree to something. So I'll work with the Law Director to put something together, but no, that's not, in my opinion, those are two completely separate things.
But you're also looking at requesting a city ordinance to come to city council.
No, that's something that the delegation has discussed. That does not mean that's something that's going to move forward. That doesn't necessarily mean that that's something that we have to present. Just as the Adamus Board has brought forward things and discussed as an organization, things that I don't necessarily agree with, that, again, it has to be adopted by council for it to be city policy. So again, that wouldn't be something. On the other committee, committee, you mentioned the Health Equity Committee. Yes, there has been discussions among multiple different organizations in our community, and actually it's a part of our strategic plan that was discussed of our strategic plan that was discussed, on how do we create a um Citizen Academy, I think is what we called it, and make an introduction for individuals that wanna learn more about their community, that may be interested in running for office in the future. So there was a population of people that said, what does a framework like that look like? They have put something together. They have ran it past me and I said, well, who's gonna run this? How is it gonna be done? So nothing formally has been presented. My understanding is that they are looking to run it similar to like the um the sheriff's program. It would be run through the Chamber of Commerce as like a leadership development program of individuals who are interested in learning more about how their city government works. Nothing has been adopted, nothing's been brought to you, and I have email documentation that says, if you guys are looking to do this, I would like you to present it to the City of Finley Council Strategic Planning Committee so that they have an understanding and can show their support or opposition. So nothing is definitive. Organizations in our community are free to have conversations about things that they would like to see happen in our community.
Uh that's Mr. Stachek's been waiting for quite a while here. Mr. Stachek.
The second component of this, and it needs to be clear, it is not proper nor legal or proper use of public funds for employees on city time to be involved in political activities, nor can we, for example, years ago, um promote levy for political causes on city property. Uh and we had in the past, even for our own uh temporary tax that uh we had in place and the desire to continue that. Uh back then, uh the mayor's office had an individual who they were paying on city time to help promote that tax, which was inappropriate and not allowed. So I think two things need to happen then, since you've acknowledged that there is, seems to be a political component to that evolving. If that's the case, we need those employees to document their time there. And that time, if it's on their normal hours work, will probably have to be excluded from their city pay. However, I can't determine that without some assistance from the Director of Law and proper documentation. But if there is a political component, this, it is not a proper use of public funds or city employees to be paid to participate in that type of politicking, and that's very clear.
Okay, back to you, Ms. Frishy.
So I have, and I said in the very beginning of this, I think this group is free to do what they need, but when there are certain things coming into play that could impact our grant funding, and then when we're coming into play, when we're getting into politics, there's twelve, there's many different stages to this, to this process. You wanna tie it to the Citizen Sheriff Academy? I helped set up the Citizen Sheriff Academy, and there was nothing in there about running people for candidates for elected offices and prepping them and screening them. And that is exactly what's in here. If you wanna take all of that section out and just talk about visiting committees, learning what boards are out there that citizens can be on, great, but you're ta- this has been taken way too far, and it's being taken too far through economic development and yourself. And that is a problem. And if it is an issue for public funds being used, it needs to be addressed. So you can laugh at me about it, but it, there's, there's a lot of politicking going on, and this, if candidates are interested in ru- running for office, the Democratic Party, but the Republican Party, they can help folks do that, but not on city time and on city tax dollars.
Mayor?
I will certainly work with the law director to provide clarification, cuz there's a gross misunderstanding of the intentions of that organization and the stage at which it is. There has been no involvement by city officials or employees. I know Jacqueline has attended the delegation meetings. That is not something that has been explicitly worked on at those meetings. It's a separate work group that has put together a framework for discussion, and I have explicitly communicated to them that the citis- the strategic plan of the city of Finley would like to see a Citizen Academy and would, and would vet that. And I think that you bring up some good points that you would be able to air at that point. Saying that it is economic development is where I draw the line, because the politicking is that you guys, individuals involved in city government, continue to push back on certain or, certain organization and certain, certain individuals inappropriately. And continuing to bring, try to attack organizations that are doing good work in our community, and this has absolutely nothing to do with economic development. And so I'm happy to answer any questions, as I have, but I just want to clarify, you are reading minutes from a meeting of a committee in the organization, and I am providing clarity that the citizens can be assured that there is not activity by city employees that would be inappropriate or involved. An organization has put together a framework. We will provide feedback on that, and if it is implemented, city council will have an appropriate opportunity to do so.
All right, one last thing, Holly, and then let's move on.
Yep, and I would agree with that. So to say I'm politicizing it, that organization group of this um Health and Equity Committee, Dionne Newbauer, who works for the chamber, was in there in the minutes, and it says that she's working on raising money to fund this. So it's in those minutes. So you can say whatever you like. Right now, my only concern is city employees, city council, you, serving on a committee that is um screening and promoting candidates is completely out of line, and it needs to be addressed. The same as I need clarity from the law director. I don't need you to work with the law director. I just need him to give a legal opinion with regards to the other part of it.
Other new business. Mayor?
I will be quick, uh just one quick item. I just wanted to draw your attention within the city council packet. You may have noticed along with Jeremy's letters on various uh capital improvement projects, we included the specific project pages, which are currently in your capital planning book. We felt it was a good reminder on how we are showing you how different projects carry over multiple years, and there's a summary of the projects in here. So please, as we are providing those, make sure you're giving those a good look. And because I like to end on positive notes, thank you to the continued work of our teams. North Blanchard Street has an ongoing water leak that we are continuing to investigate. Our teams are working together in their little strike force teams, which is working great, uh but we are opening and closing those lanes. So if you're in that area, continue to be aware and monitor. Uh we do know that there is a continued leak that we are hoping to get resolved. That is all. Thank you. Oh, and Appropriations Committee meeting tomorrow night, five-thirty. I guess, I don't remember which room we said it was in, probably upstairs, but may, um most likely. That will be live streamed, and Andrew Brossert will be zooming in as well. So please make sure to attend.
I'd be remiss to not men- mention the fact that the city of Finley was awarded the Metropolitan uh Award for the eleventh year in a row. That's, uh, don't shake your head. That's, that's a, that's a great award for the city of Finley, and it comes with a large group of people that work hard to promote Finley, both as a city to come and live or a city to bring jobs to. So just remind that. Okay, with that in mind...
Actually, can I add one thing, Mr. President?
Real quick.
My apologies. I want to point out that all of our projects this year were from existing businesses continuing to reinvest, and I think that that's really important. Economic development work is not just about big flashy attraction projects. It really is about the meat and potatoes of working with our existing businesses to help them continue to grow and be prosperous.
Mr. Palmer?
Uh on a happy note here, three Finley High wrestlers have made it to the state tournament, so I wanna send my congratulations to them. Keegan Klotz, Kate Sim- Kate Simons, and Laney Oliver. So Laney hopefully gets that elusive state title, three-time runner-up, so good luck to all three Trojan athletes.
Okay, at that, that concludes council business. At this point in time, I'm gonna invite two individuals to come up and speak on two different subjects. We're gonna start with Joyce, and by the time you say that, says Smoder.
Sorry.
Yes, no problem.
Thank you.
Joyce, can you station name and your address?
Okay. Okay, my name is Joyce Smoder. I live at two thirty-three Terrace Drive, Finley, Ohio. And I want to thank you, council, everyone, for me to speak tonight. And I'm bringing this to the council for you to hear. I did everything I could possibly do to dissolve, uh to um resolve this. On February seventeenth of two thousand twenty-four, a city plow struck my husband's pickup truck parked on the street. Police came down and made a report. We, I've called the insurance multiple times to get somewhere, but I got nowhere. On three twenty-five of twenty-four, I got a uh call from Dayton, Ohio about a truck, wanted the VIN number and the other information about the truck. On six-ten of twenty-four, I called and talked to Sharon of an insurance company, and she never got back with me. And then I called the mayor's office and talked to Kathy. She told me about, I told her about the information. She wanted pictures and the estimates. Heard nothing back. On eight twelve of twenty-four, I got a self, uh cell from, number from, a call from Ellen Hatfield, commercials, um claims, adjuster, third-party administration act on behalf of the claims. She needed pictures and damage and the estimates. Nothing done. I was told to go, someone told me to go and talk to the mayor. And I went there, and they said she was not in. The person that talked to me, um that took care of the insurance was not there for a couple days. Um the person I talked to was going to talk to Kathy and get it back with me. She wanted me to send pictures and estimates. They already, I've already sent them. The next week, the person in the mayor's office called me, which I was really happy to hear, and said that Kathy was aware of the a- accident, and the city was at fault, and they would take care of it. Nothing done. Then was, then I was told to call Rod Martin. And so when I called him, he was at a meeting, and they took my name and number and why I was calling. And never got back with me. They did wanna know why I was calling. On today, on three-four, I just wanted to check with the mayor's office. So I called today, and I talked to Kathy. She said a report was sent to Amy on HR directors, but she hasn't heard anything back. Kathy looked up the accident number, and she showed in June, an insurance adjuster was handling the accident. Heard nothing from him. Kathy said she was going to check back with me, uh check on this and get back with me. So that's why I'm here addressing the issue, hopefully to get this resolved. Maybe you need to check to see if there should be changes in the adjusters and the third party. I have done all I can do at this time. I have two questions for you guys. If your vehicle got hit by a plow, would you want it fixed? Number two, if a person hits a city vehicle, would you, would you make sure it was fixed? So I have pictures here. I have estimates here, and I want you to, I thank you for listening to me tonight. Thank you.
Questions for Joyce. Mayor?
Joyce, I'm really sorry to hear of this. Um certainly unacceptable. We have recently changed insurance companies, so hopefully that will help. Um if you can see me after the meeting, we will work through, and I will personally take your information to make sure we can follow up and figure out why it's taken so long.
Thank you.
Ms. Frishy?
Rob, um Jill, we, we, I thought we had money in the law department's um miscellaneous spending. Can we, if we're at fault, can we, have you gotten your car fixed?
It's still sitting.
Oh, hot dog. That's not acceptable.
It's been, it's been over a year that I have taken a lot of time and calls, and...
Yeah. So can we get her taken care of, and then we can deal with the insurance? Because this is unacceptable behavior.
Well, I will say...
I have the police report right here.
I will say this is new territory for me. I don't know what all funds I have available, uh having been appointed January nineteenth, but I can talk with the auditor about that and uh see how we handle claims in the past appropriately.
I know we have like a fund in the law department, like if somebody falls on a sidewalk or something, that we can get things taken care of, so I assume it could be under that. So if you can get her taken care of, hopefully this week, Rob. This week, Rob.
I'll work with the mayor, and I'll, I'll figure out from Jim what I'll have available.
You're already through your first anniversary date of not getting your vehicle fixed, so...
It was two of seventeen of twenty-four when they hit.
So Joyce, thank, thank you for coming. The speed of government sometimes is very slow. Probably...
It sounds like an insurance thing.
Probably slower than that plow was going. Okay, thank you. Uh our second is, get the right thing. Craig Kufferberg. Some of you know Craig. Craig's got a handout first you want, he wants to handout to everybody, and then uh again, Craig, uh we've discussed what you need to do. All right, name, address, and there you go.
All right. My name's Craig Kufferberg. I live at one-three-zero First Street. Um I'm coming to you um as a person who has worked over forty years, serving youth and educators in the public schools, um and a resident of Finley since nineteen eighty-nine. Um is really what I want to address. Um what I've handed out to you, cuz this, this would actually take much more than four minutes uh to express to you. So I'm really gonna go over what I handed out to you, um and then hopefully if you have questions, I'll be happy uh to answer those. But this has, uh deals with the Ed Choice voucher system and what it's doing to the economic uh hope streams of cities like Finley and Hancock County. Uh the very first page I handed out to you has, is uh the House, Ohio House districts, and each dot represents a private school that is receiving vouchers. And we are in House District eighty-three. You know this is only three dots in that particular district. The second page, the information that's important on this page tells you that there's only three voucher schools it's receiving, or three private schools that are receiving voucher dollars, and only four hundred sixty-eight students, where there's fifty-two public schools and eighteen thousand four hundred one students. Okay? Behind that is some spreadsheets. Most important spreadsheet is the very first one. This is the spreadsheet of the district. Hank, uh the public schools in Hancock County, Harden County, and Logan County, we don't have the whole county. It's just the upper part. And the school district, I believe that's in that is Benjamin Local and Indian Lake, who's actually doing quite well with the funding system. They're being overfunded to what the fair school funding says they should have. So the negative impact this is really having is on Hancock and Harden County in this particular district. The breakdown for this, you know the schools, you know the counties. There is a fair school funding that's going through the state legislature. That next column that says foundation calculated state funding, that's what these schools would get if the fair school funding was actually funded completely. But it is not. The next column shows what each of those school districts gets from the state. And then the shortfall is the next column. When you add that up, Hancock County's shortfall is almost eight-point-three million dollars alone. That really doesn't tell the whole story, because some of that money's going back to the private schools. So how much of these dollars are we missing? If you add up Harden, Hancock, and Logan County, it's over fourteen million dollars that's being taken from the public schools. Well, how much is going back to the private schools? They fund at the elementary level, six thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars per student, and the high school, over eight thousand. I'm running out of time. So I figured, let's just give the private schools the over eight thousand, which is an exaggeration, because specifically in Hancock County, most of those students are elementary. Saint Michael's, that gets vouchers, doesn't even have nine through twelve students. But if you multiply by the eight-point-four thousand, you find out that in this district, nearly four million dollars are going to the voucher, to the voucher private schools. So how much are we losing? We're losing over ten million dollars to Hancock and Harden County alone. To me, that would be considerable to a city, cuz you're losing that tax revenue, cuz that money goes to pay salaries and benefits in school districts, the vast majority of that money. And your chief financial officer can tell you, if you infuse ten million dollars just for this year into this economy, that's not just those people. That generates over and over and over again as they spend their money. Okay?
Mr. Helm, I'd like to grant a minute or five minutes if we need to, so that he can finish explaining this to his satisfaction.
Hi.
Thank you. Um I just learned about this, um not this last Friday, the Friday before, when I got this information. I've had this for a while, but like I said, it was incomplete, cuz he didn't know how much that went back. What's important is if you go back, and, and this just blows my mind. If you go back to this map of the state of Ohio and take a look at where the dots are, that's where that ten million dollars of our money that we should have is going. And if you look, the concentration of the dots are in Cincinnati, Dayton, Columbus, Toledo, Cleveland, Akron, and way out there in the east. I have no idea what's out there. Okay, whatever that is. But the ones that I know are Democrat-run areas. So it appears to me that our state legislators are redistributing our wealth back into the So it appears to me that our state legislators are redistributing our wealth back into these urban areas, because the more rural the areas are, the more significant this is. And the governor's latest proposal to fund schools cuts public school funding even more and raises private school funding even more. And if you compare on that Hancock County spreadsheet, the state is funding a public schools at a little over $6,000 per student. They're funding the private schools at a greater amount than they're funding the public schools. So why are our Republican state legislators taking money out of Republican jurisdictions, sending them to Democrat jurisdictions, and funding private schools at a higher amount than public schools? None of this makes sense. And I bring it to you because it affects your bottom line for the City of Findlay, and you are able to talk to our representatives, one of which happens to be the president of the Senate. You've got those connections. So I wanted you to be informed. So that's why I came tonight. I don't know if you have any questions.
Questions or comments to Craig? Thank you, Craig.
Yep. Just one last comment.
Real quick.
Fully respect what I heard that you're not concerned about the tax money when you're looking at the pot distribution things. I didn't even know we were going to be talking about that. But if you fix this and bring in $10 million extra to this area, I'm sure that'll more than make up for what you'd, ever you'd get from the pot distribution centers. So you fix that problem, and you'd help fix public schools at the same time. So you kill two birds with one stone. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Craig. That concludes tonight's business. I want to thank the audience for being patient. Tonight was one of our longer meetings. We talked, discussed a lot of, a lot of stuff that I'm sure concerns a lot of you. It's, it, I enjoy the fact that the public does come to these meetings and does have a say in the city business. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Palmer, second Mr. Baumann, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Any opposed, nay. We are adjourned.